Hello, everyone, and welcome. My name is Ally Laux. My pronouns are she/her, and I will be one of your co-moderators this evening. I am a student at JJC and have been here at Joliet Junior College since this fall. I'm pursuing my degree in English, and I am hoping to transfer out to a four-year university in the fall of 2026 to continue my degree and possibly major, double-major, or minor in business. I am a student leader and treasurer for the JJC Student Government, and I love being involved with the school. Additionally, I am a copy editor and writer for the school's newspaper, The Blazer, and that's really it.
Hello, everyone. I'm Riley Stone. I'm a student here at JJC. I'm part of student government as well. My last semester, this is my last semester, so I'll be graduating, and I plan to go to a four-year and hopefully get a degree in physics, thanks to Hogan, of course. And I'm an active student on campus with high academic status, and on behalf of the Student Government Association, thank you for joining us today.
We are excited to have three Joliet Junior College Board of Trustees candidates join, oh, five, four? Four. Four candidates joining us this evening. Before we formally welcome them, let me take a minute to provide an overview of why we are hosting this event. Here at JJC, the student government is a dedicated organization responsible for organizing events, activities, and programs that promote student engagement and collaboration. We also serve as the voice of the student body, advocating for students' interests and sharing student insights with JJC administration. Today's event holds great significance as the April 1st elections impact not only us as students but also as residents of Joliet. The Board of Trustees serves as the voice of the community at JJC, shaping policies that directly affect the students. These policymakers play a crucial role in setting academic standards and ensuring that JJC remains accessible to everyone in the community. Board members are accountable for the institution's performance, making it essential for the communities to exercise its right to vote. Electing dedicated board members ensures that JJC continues to provide students with high-quality education, empowering them to succeed in their careers, college, and beyond.
At this time, I would like to provide you with the guidelines for today's event. The forum will be moderated by members of student government, Ally and myself. Each candidate will be allowed three minutes to provide an introduction for themselves. Before today's event, JJ Student Government invited all candidates, and we're pleased to have the four who accepted joining us. To ensure student voices are heard, we gave current students the opportunity to submit questions. Our student government members carefully collected and curated these submissions, selecting the questions that best represent the key topics and concerns shared by the students. These will be read during the event. Please note the following guidelines for this event. All candidates will have three minutes to provide an introduction and reply to each question. No dialogue between candidates will be allowed following the responses. No distribution of election materials or campaigning in any way at this event. This includes handouts or electronic communication. Ten minutes before the end of this session, we will ask the candidates to provide their closing remarks, and today's event will be recorded for future viewings. Again, thank you to all the candidates for being here, and let's get started.
Of the six candidates who will be on the ballot, four have joined us this evening, and we will allow them to each give an introduction of themselves. It is our pleasure to invite you to provide a brief statement to just introduce yourself and let us get to know you. The first candidate we'll have up is Timothy John Broderick.
Good afternoon, good evening. My name's Timothy Broderick, and thank you for inviting me to participate in the Student Forum for a Trustee Position, Joliet Junior College Board. First, I'd like to wish the JJC Women's Basketball Team good luck this evening and their basketball tournament. Additionally, I'd like to recognize my candidate colleagues Elaine, Nancy, Maureen, Tim, and Bob a healthy and constructive campaign. You may be wondering, and rightfully so, who is Timothy John Broderick? What is he all about and whether I like him? One of my mantras is service over ego. To get right down to the matter of my background, we'll get to that in a little bit, I'm a social moderate and a physical conservative. If you look at my voting record, you'll notice that I have voted for Democrats and Republicans in several elections over the last 30 years. In addition, my most recent fundraiser had a delightful mix of Democrats and Republicans, indicating that I can sincerely listen to and work with people from both sides of the aisle. In many circles, I'm defined as a bridge builder. I sincerely listen, to, and embrace both sides of the argument while achieving a fair and equitable outcome for all concerned. Not easy, but that's my attempt and that's my focus. I've been fortunate to have experienced enriching educational experiences from both public and private institutions throughout my academic experience, from Pershing Grammar School as a kindergartner through the College of St. Francis as an undergrad, making stops in between St. Paul of the Apostle, Dirksen, Joliet Catholic, Joliet West, and yes, Joliet Junior College. You might be asking yourself, St. Paul's, Dirksen, Joliet Catholic, Joliet West, two of those stops for summer school for some additional academic, let's say, efforts. Nonetheless, I thank you for welcoming me here today. I look forward to listening to my colleagues and candidates. Thank you.
Next, we will have Elaine Bottomly introduce herself.
Good evening. My name is Elaine Bottomly. I'm excited to be on the ballot on April 1st as a candidate for JJC trustee. I'm a lifelong Joliet resident, and I'm a third-generation JJC student. JJC was really critical for me in my academic journey. While I never graduated with an associate's degree, so I don't think I can officially consider myself an alumni, the classes that I took here in summer really helped me stay on track while I was in college. These summer classes allowed me to enjoy small class sizes and great academic support, especially for Calculus I and II, which to this day remains the best advice I can ever give someone. The credit hours I transferred allowed me to graduate on time with my undergraduate degree in urban planning from the University of Illinois and allowed me to stay on track to receive a master's degree in urban planning from the University of Illinois-Chicago. After school, I started my career. My career really has had a big focus on transportation, on community building, and local government. Throughout my career, especially in my current role as deputy chief of staff for the Will County Executive, I've overseen several initiatives that really aim to enhance the quality of life and improve public service for residents throughout our entire county and throughout the JJC district. These projects that I've initiated have allowed me to speak directly with residents about their hopes and dreams for the future of our community. I have consistently found that residents are excited about the prospect of improving quality of life, all with a focus on the future of generations ahead of us and making sure that our next generation is truly set up for success. My dedication to community really does extend past a job description. I aim every day in my life to make sure that this ideal community that I want to live in really does exist. I've served on the Joliet Public Library Board since November 2020 and on the Cathedral Area Preservation Association Board since May of 2021. In my time on the Joliet Public Library Board, my colleagues have elected me to serve as both treasurer and secretary. We've worked together to update policies to ensure that the library offers cutting-edge services for patrons while also creating a modernized workplace that prioritizes the needs of staff. During my time as a leader with Kappa, I've revamped our membership. I've coordinated large-scale neighborhood events, and I've also volunteered for numerous cleanup days. I'm really grateful to be here this evening to answer questions from some of our most important stakeholders, our students. The current climate here is great. We can make it better and make sure that JJC is set up for the best for our current students and our next generation of students. Through my answers tonight, I hope to showcase why a vote for Elaine Bottomly ensures a community focus, ensures sensible spending, and forward-looking solutions. Thank you.
Next, we have Nancy Garcia introduce herself.
Yes. Good evening, all. Thank you to student government for hosting this candidate's forum to make it accessible for our students, staff, faculty, and the community to learn about the candidates for the Board of Trustees for the upcoming election on April 1st, 2025. My name is Nancy Garcia, and I have had the pleasure to be part of the JJC Board for the last six years. I was first elected in 2019. At the time, I was the youngest trustee to be elected to the Board. It was a new experience to run for public office. That experience came with many challenges and many learning opportunities. My family and I immigrated from Michoacan, Mexico when I was nine years old. It was difficult to learn a new language and adjust to a new culture. This experience is really similar to the experience of many families that come to the United States in pursuit of new opportunities. Thanks to the help of my counselors, in high school, I was able to come to JJC and graduate. Then, I was able to attend Aurora University and receive my bachelor's. I know that in order for a student to be able to navigate higher education, it requires support from a lot of people, including counselors and mentors. I continue to be committed to work with the current president, Dr. Namual, cabinet and administration to continue to make sure that we have the infrastructure in place at JJC to be able to support our students in the process of navigating higher education. Over the last six years, I have learned so much about my role as a trustee and my responsibility to our students, staff, and community that are part of our District 525, which includes parts of Will, Grundy, Kendall, LaSalle, Livingston, and Cook Counties. I have also learned the importance of being honest, transparent, and accountable to our students and community, time and time again. Despite the challenges that we face at JJC or at the Board level, I'm mindful that the students and the community are listening to the words and watching the actions of myself and the rest of the trustees. I strive to be direct and challenge my fellow trustees by holding them accountable while still being professional. Since 2021, I have had the opportunity to be part of the executive board as the secretary. I am currently the chairwoman for the Policy Committee Board. In this role, I work with two of my fellow trustees to draft and review policies that are implemented at JJC. I'm committed and continue to be committed to continue JJC's legacy of affordability for all students in District 525 as we work to make JJC a free institution for all students. I also continue to be committed to increase the access to higher education for minorities, first-generation and immigrant students via the community college experience, and the last thing that I continue to be committed is to equip JJC with the latest technology. Again, thank you for the invitation to be part of this forum. I look forward to the questions that our students have drafted and sharing more about my commitment to our students and community. Thank you.
And finally, we'll have Maureen Broderick.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the student government for this opportunity to meet all of our candidates for the JJC trustee seats. All of the students are the primary focus of mine, and I think of everyone that is a trustee. In being here for 10 years, I see the students are our main focus. I bring 22 years of board experience, 12 from being on a school board, a grade school board in New Lennox, and 10 here at JJC. My first year on the Board was in 2015. I was asked to get more trustees involved because there was not many trustees that showed up. The visibility was bad. I got four of the trustees to start showing up of activities that were both internal and external and for the foundation, which was very critical. Visibility has always been a focus of mine since day one. We need to be seen so the community sees us. That can be further seen by activity in attending state and national conferences, which I've done. I am currently the only JJC trustee that has earned the ICCT Education Award. The ICCT is Illinois Community College Trustees Association, which is over all of us that we are a member of. It dealt with completed sessions in legal, legislative, ethics, and trustee leadership training, using data within the community college system to drive decisions, education on public pensions, trends in higher education, and exploring diversity in the classroom and beyond. I am the past president of the Illinois Community College Trustees Association, which is over 48 community colleges in Illinois. That's all of the community colleges in Illinois. They voted me in as their president, and I feel very comfortable that they did that and secure that they did that. I have been to all of the ICCTA conferences and the national conventions except for one, when I think you all remember, I had COVID and I was almost dying. I was in a coma and in the hospital for over 30 days. I too now am a substitute teacher in three of our major high school districts that feed into JJC to support dual-credit and to encourage enrollment. Increased enrollment is necessary. I too have seen that we need more English language learning needs because being in the classroom in those high schools, I see some students and a lot of students that have it very difficult to be able to speak English, and I think we need to add more to the English language for them to learn, English language learning. We are now an HSI-designated, and we work with our needs for our Hispanic students. I also see great accomplishments with having JJC accessible for disabled and handicapped students. My own nephew is attending here, and he has both, the disabilities. He loves the accommodations that JJC has, and I'm glad to see that because I even went further to ask about transportation. PACE has a service to help our disabled and handicapped students. I believe in community college. My two children are graduates from the community college. My daughter was a nursing student here. My son went to Marin Valley because it didn't offer what we had here, but both of them were able to chart their workplace paths to obtain a four-year degree and to be recognized and hired by one in nursing and one in banking. The Board also needs blend of experienced board members to balance the Board. I am your most experienced board member here. I'm a senior board member, not only in age, but thank you.
Well, thank you, guys, for sharing a little bit about yourselves, and I think we're ready to get the questions going. We'll start with Timothy, and we'll go down with each question. What skills and expertise do you have that would be beneficial in your role as a JJC trustee member?
Oh, even though I might be 63 years old, it wasn't too long ago that I was a student here. So I have a keen perspective on what it's like to walk these halls as a student and then having those key learnings throughout the business career that I've had over 30 years to say, hey, this is what I've learned in that business career that helped me as a student and vice versa. So I think bringing that practical experience of being in the business world for over 30 years, in addition to that, being mindful of doing the right thing versus being right and having that perspective. Everyone wants to be right, and I think everyone in this room wants to be right, but sometimes your leadership and skill sets and experiences tend you to do the right thing. And I think that's what I'll bring to the Board, trying to do the right thing for all concern. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I think it's really easy to start talking about the opportunities that we all in there sitting up here can bring to the Board. One of the best things that I can talk about personally is my ability to bring partnership, the ability to work together, the ability to work with someone that you don't necessarily agree with and make sure that you do it respectfully. I think that one of the things that I bring across every aspect of my life is an ability to work with someone and work across an aisle. This is a nonpartisan Board, but we interact with entities that are partisan. We'll interact with legislators in Springfield, in DC. We're going to interact with folks at a municipal and a township level, and making sure that you bring forward a professional self, a professional perspective, and a professional viewpoint of Joliet Junior College is something that I can do very easily. So I think that is one of the skills that I would really like to tout. Another thing that I've done a lot throughout my job, throughout my volunteer opportunities, has been around policy creation. I do this every single day in my job. I help make sure that we're enacting policies that are forward-thinking, policies that really are keeping students and keeping future generations at the front of mind and at the front of heart as we start to look to the future. We really need to make sure that we always have a constituent mindset. That's not just taxpayers. That's the people that are in this building taking classes, and that's the next generation of people that are going to be coming here and taking classes as well. So I think I offer everything from policy, professionalism, partnership, and I think most importantly, you know, forward-thinking perspective to make JJC continue to be the best institution that it can be in perpetuity.
Okay. I think this works. So thank you so much for the wonderful question. I think that I can go ahead and share a lot of skills that I can go ahead and bring to this particular role. The first one is I already have experience of six years as being a trustee. During that time, I do have a track record of being able to listen to other people, different ideas, listen to the ideas of the students, their concerns, and being able to actually listen and being able to address them in a way that it makes sense for them. Something else that I can go ahead and showcase is my ability to problem solve. It's not only identifying the problem necessarily, it's, okay, now we know what the problem is or what the concern is, how do we actually address it in a way that we're working with different stakeholders to make sure that we're able to solve the issue? The other part that I can go ahead and mention is my ability to bring ideas to the table and actually being able to collaborate with others. And this includes some of the initiatives that we have started at JJC, including some of the initiatives around language access, making sure that we continue to work with everyone that is part of the trustees in order to keep a balanced budget, and a lot of different initiatives that at the end of the day impact our students. And again, I have a track record of being really respectful but also kind and being able to listen to others and get things done. So thank you.
Thank you. Great question. Well, I do have the experience, the 22 years, 10 here and 12 at New Lennox, but the level of education, I think, is critical for being a trustee. There's a lot to learn in your first year, a lot, and you have to know what you're doing and how you're voting and what you're voting on. I believe in investigating. I'm a finance person. I'm an underwriter for loans. I look to find out all the critical points before I vote on something. It's necessary for us board members to understand what we're looking at and what we're going to approve. Also, you need to know our mission and our vision when you're a board member. I feel that I have that. I have, I started, when I was, I was supposed to say in 2019, I started the Finance Committee because I was very concerned that we had a Finance Committee. I think that is critical. I also believe that we should have good legislative relationships, both federal and state, which I have when I was the ICCTA rep. I met constantly with our federal and state legislators to make sure they knew what JJC was all about. And I always said with the governor, when I met with the governor and gave him his award for connecting with JJC, I said, we are the first community college. I never say we're the oldest, we are the first, and everybody nationwide knows we are the first, and I bring that to the table all the time. I believe in community engagement and visibility. I believe in any of the IT concerns that we have with our ERP system that I'm focused on, and that's why I think it's good, I have a good background on that. I love working with my college trustees to hear the other concerns from their other community colleges in Illinois. I think we need to hear everything that they bring to the table, and it's a good meeting ground to network with all of our Illinois Community College trustees. I think that what we bring is, I bring a lot of responsibility of being here, commitment to being here, and engagement with all of you, and I enjoy learning the departments and learning what's going on and spreading the word when I'm a trustee or when I'm a sub for the other high schools. It makes it really enriching for the kids to know, because I always wear my JJC shirt and my tag. They know who I am, and the principals and the chairpeople of the departments love that because I believe in the dual-credit and I support the dual-credit. And I think we need to go further with it because kids are anxious to be in dual-credit programs. Thank you.
All right. For our next question, we're going to start with Elaine, and then we'll have Timothy finish this off. Why are you interested in serving the JJC community as a board member?
Great, thank you. Why are you interested in serving on JJC? That is a really easy question for me to answer. I obviously moved away for school, and I made a decision to come home, right? You graduate, you get out of school, you have an opportunity, you have a time that you can go anywhere you want. I made a conscious decision to move home. When I started dating my husband, I told him, we're moving to Joliet. If that's going to be a deal breaker, we should end this now. We're married, we live in Joliet. In the time between college to moving here, I started getting involved in communities that weren't home. I was involved in communities that were in Glen Ellen, that were up in Chicago, and it was great, and I felt like I was giving back, but I had this moment of, this isn't home. I'm putting a lot of time and effort into someplace that I love, that's someplace that I appreciate. I need to be putting this into my own community. So that's kind of where I really hunkered down. I took a look at my involvements and said, it's time for me to focus on where I love. That's Joliet, that's Joliet area, that's Will County, that's JJC. I've seen firsthand the importance that this institution plays in the lives of our students and the lives of businesses and business owners that are looking for students and looking for trained, educated professionals. It's easy. JJC is super awesome. I don't have to tell you guys this. You're all in this room because JJC holds a special place in your heart, it holds a special place in mine. I want to be here because I want people in the future and today and tomorrow to always be able to come back and say, JJC is important. I want to show up for this community. I want to show up for the students, and I want to show up for the constituents of District 525.
Again, you all are doing awesome with the questions, and those are questions that clearly let us know why we're here and the overall idea of why we want to be a trustee. For me, JJC is a great college, and it's something, and it's an institution that is respected in the community. It has the ability to bring community members that might not have access to specific resources, the planetarium being one example, and being able to connect community members to some of those crucial resources that we have accessible here. I also believe in the mission of the organization of the college to strengthen communities, inspire learning, and transform lives. And I know that in collaboration with our trustees and you all that are providing feedback and are being part of the overall process, you all can continue to hold us accountable to make sure that we're doing what we need to do for our students. Again, I believe that I do have the skills, I do have the experience to be a trustee. And again, I know that there's things that I will continue to learn, and I'm open to learning to be the best trustee that I can be in this particular situation. Thank you.
Why am I interested? Well, it started when I was on the New Lennox Grade School Board. My kids were in grade school, and I had a love for being involved, and I felt it was a give back to the community. That's what I feel with JJC. It's my give back, my volunteering to come back to the community. My children are community college graduates. I saw what the best thing that they came from. My daughter was stellar with the nursing. The nursing program is unbelievable. I got into understanding and seeing what it was all about and just the glory of JJC and what it brings. And now, out in public, talking to legislators, talking to the community, and those that are JJC alumni. You'd be surprised. I mean, I'm glad we're doing our background of the alumnis that are on our podcasts. That is phenomenal, the roots and branches. It's amazing how much this college is spread through our seven counties, and it's great to see that we are very proud. And I am a very proud person for being on this Board and very proud of being involved in the community by being on this Board. And I'm excited because I enjoy the, just the total involvement with the Illinois Community College statewide as well as nationally. And they all know us statewide and nationally because I've made sure to broadcast that we are JJC, the first community college, and they know that at all the meetings, our quarterly meetings at the ICCT, whenever I announce my name, they always go, and the first community college, because that's what I use as the symbol of it, because we are, and we are a great college. And that's why I love being on this college and being involved. It is a stellar college. It is, not like when we were growing up. It is magnanimous now, absolutely magnanimous, and the campus itself speaks for itself and the students. You guys all have good pathways that we are developing and good courses that we're developing for you guys, and our focus is on our students for their career paths. Thank you.
Thank you for the question, Ally. Thank you, Maureen. Three areas why I want to serve as a board member, not in order of importance. I want to help this community be competitive, and I think being competitive takes many forms, but it starts with education. And I think I could bring value to the current Board with regards to helping you be more competitive in the role of a trustee. I have a lot of pride in JJC. I see a lot of members here that are community members that I'm very proud of to call friends, constituents, and neighbors, right? And I think the other piece is that there's nothing wrong with pride as long as it's healthy and it's focused in the right direction. So pride, competitiveness, and I'm also here to help you students to be successful as well as the professors. And I think this is a student forum, but students are only complimented and complimented very well by their professors. So I take a very holistic look at the needs and how to be competitive, how to be prideful in a very good and healthy way, and that's not only helping the students, but it's also ensuring- So I take a very holistic look at the needs and how to be competitive, how to be prideful in a very good and healthy way. And that's not only helping the students, but I was also ensuring that the resources that are available for all the administration, staff, and professors. So, thank you, Ally. Thank you, Riley.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. This time, we're starting with Nancy, ending with Elaine. What challenges do you anticipate having while serving on the board, and how do you plan on overcoming them?
I think one of the challenges that I can see that we might deal with is issues around the different systems that we have with technology, the ERP systems. That's something that we have been working on to make sure that is something that we're able to address, to make it easier for our staff, administration, and at the end of the day, that our students are also not impacted by the, some of the issues that we had in the past. So I think that that might be something that will come up again. We do already have a plan, and we have been putting things into place in order to make sure that we're able to address, we're able to work with different people to provide their experience and their knowledge to make it easier as we transition fully into the new system. The other challenges that I can see is some of the things that are happening at the federal level that unfortunately do impact us as an institution. So, some of the things that I can think of in order to be able to address is, again, keeping the lines of communication open and also working with our legislators at the state level to make sure that regardless of what's happening at the federal level, that we're still able to make sure that we're providing some protections at the state level with our legislators, and more importantly, making sure that we're keeping our students protected and providing some of that policies and information that is crucial for our students to have everything that they need here at JJC and in the local community to be able to thrive and be successful in whatever they want to do in their future. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Well, I have to agree. We had spent in 2019 quite a bit of money on our ERP system, and that was one of the things that's been a big challenge. There were three modules. The first module and the second module were successful. The third module is the student module. And we had to deal with, what were we going to do? Where were we going to be? And the board decided to go back to the Alucian situation of their program. It was the best to go back to. We want something that's going to be student-friendly, student-accessible, where they can get in, they can see their, they can register, they can see their classes, they can do whatever they need without any problems. But we also have to keep in mind, too, that we upgraded to meet the needs that are there currently, not where we were, to make sure we go up. And I think our administration is working on that, but it's a growing situation that we have to get into. Also, AI. AI is a big issue, and I think all across the board, everybody knows what AI is. That has come that we need to get courses because all of us are learning about AI through our, our, our government people that are telling us what's happening, but in the classroom, the students are more familiar than what we are. So we have to adapt to what this, what you are learning about AI and what we can offer with AI here. Also, I think we also need to have courses that are going to be provided to the students for increasing enrollment that are going to mark significant workplace career paths for them and what their income levels will be. So if we start identifying the work paths and what the careers are and what they can gain and what courses they can take, that I think we need to, and I think we're in the process that we have to work that, and I think it's a challenge because we're all looking at what we can do with relationships with our, our relationships with our corporations, our companies that we work with. I think we need to have that so that we definitely career path you guys in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Challenges being on the board, they could be kind of segmented into a few different areas. The first thing that hits my mind is managing passion. And you might think, "Well, what, what does that mean?" Well, I think there's a very good, talented, existing board with great passion. What I would look at is an opportunity area to manage those passions with regards to good leadership and aligning objectives towards a specific policy, measured outcomes. So managing passion. I think a few of the colleagues here mentioned about the IT platform. I think that's a fundamental thing that we don't necessarily see all the time. Sometimes we feel it when it's not working with regards to the ERP, but I think the administration is headed in the right direction with current good policy, direction of support from the existing board, and I look forward to supporting that towards specific measured outcomes of achievement. And the other thing that I'm pretty passionate about, and I think that maybe we all are, is a community college baccalaureate program. I'm a supporter of that initiative, driving that forward. And how would we do that? How would I do that? I would work with my board members on an aligned objective and policy and steps and procedures to ensure that we're following a very analytical pathway, engage with our legislators proactively to achieve those measured outcomes. Again, kind of tying back to being competitive in marketplace, being prideful in a good way with regards to achieving those outcomes. So, Elaine?
I think when I really try to narrow down what challenges I think I would expect while serving as a JJC trustee, to me, it really comes down to two basic things. And I'm going to start with the one that I think's a lot more important, and, and that really is continued support for our students. Making sure that we are doing the best that we can for our students every single day. And that means sometimes putting ego aside, right? So when I say why is continued support for students a potential challenge, it's, there's a lot of uncertainty. We don't know what's going to happen with grant funding. We don't know what's going to happen with any potential decrees or statements. What we are hearing, though, is directly from our students, that they want us to support them, that they want a baccalaureate program, that we want to make sure that we continue to show up as trustees, as board members, with the right intention in mind to show up for our students and show up for those future generations every single day. I think the other part kind of goes a little bit hand in hand with that, and that really is board relations. I think managing that and managing and working with a fellow board member and working with everyone can be challenging, and honestly, I do expect that to be a challenge, but I don't think it's impossible. I said it earlier when I answered a question, we're all in this room because JJC means something to us. JJC holds a special place in our hearts. That's true for every single trustee. That's true for every candidate up here, I have to believe that. And it's got to be working through some of the noise, working through some of the ego, and making sure you can work with someone that's sitting next to you, that's sitting across from you, and making sure that we show up every single day for the continued success of our students. Thank you.
All right. If you haven't guessed the pattern yet, we're going to start with Maureen and end with Nancy this time. What would you do to maintain open communication with your fellow board members if you were elected?
Well, the success of a board member is to have open communication. I've always believed in that. And I think when you need to talk to someone, I think that, or you need to talk to your chair or your vice chair or any of your trustees, I think that email, email's a good source. Also, we've texted each other, we call each other. Communication is the source of having good relationships, and it has to be reciprocal by both parties that are communicating. If you have teamwork and communication, you should be successful, and that's what we take pride in, in doing that in JJC. You have to open up those gates, open up your doors to talk to people, and let your board members have to know what you're feeling and what it's all about. And, I mean, we had a, one of my chairs used to call us once a week just to see what was going on. Maybe that was too much, but you know what? It made us feel like we were part of the board, and that's a good thing, to feel a part and a team. And I think the open communication, whether it's verbal or written, is necessary for us to do that. And I believe that we all can do that. It's the effort that we have to put forth. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. My mantra is seek first to understand, then to be understood. Hard to implement all the time, hard, hard, hard to implement. But I think to be a good partner, trustee, board member, really listening to the other side and trying to understand where they're coming from in a very cohesive, hopefully non-emotional manner with objectives towards a specific outcome. So, seek first to understand and then to be understood. And I think sometimes we might need, boards need to kind of take a step back out of the official boardroom, maybe go on a retreat and kind of get to know one another. Sounds a little bit corny, but we're all people, and we all have different challenges in our life. And I think that would also help with regards to building bridges, as we talked about earlier, to understand where the other person's coming from. Because until we understand that, you're not going to make progress. Thank you.
I think that serving on a board, it's always important to have communication be a key part. Obviously, you know, as you, you serve as a trustee or you serve on a board, especially a public body, you have to be aware of Open Meetings Act, right? So you can't all hop on a group text and start talking about what you're making for dinner. But, that being said, I, I really think that it's 2025, guys, right? Like, I can text someone, I can email someone, I can call someone, I can FaceTime someone. I can talk to someone while I'm walking into a building or walking out of a building after a meeting. I think that what's regularly lost is that sometimes people forget that we are all showing up because we all have good intentions. We all want to see this place succeed, and I think as you always circle back to that, you're able to build a rapport, you're able to build a relationship and understand where people are coming from. So to me, how do you maintain communication with fellow board members? It's getting to know them. It's talking to someone ahead of a meeting about what their favorite pie is, about what their favorite cake is. It's things like that, right? That, that is value, getting to know someone as a person, not just who they are sitting up on a dais making voting decisions that impact the college, right? You need to understand someone, know where they're coming from, and know what their perspective is. So, to me, it's just showing up, getting to know someone, and trying to make a genuine connection to understand where they're coming from.
Thank you for the wonderful question. I think this has already been stated, but again, highlighting the importance of it, just building those relationships one-on-one, being able to establish basic understanding of why we're here is going to be important. Why are we, are we part of, of the board? There's a lot of times that there's different votes that come up that we might not fully agree with each other, but if we already understand or know the other person that they're voting, keeping in mind the goals of the organization, of the institution, and at the end of the day, we want what is best for our students, that's always helpful. The issue is whenever we have different values, and that shows up different ways. So one of the key things, again, is making sure that we have, make time to build those relationships, that even though we might disagree on some things, at the end of the day, we still want our students to be successful. We still want to make sure that we're being held accountable to you all that are here, and even people that are not here that are part of the community, that at the end of the day, we want to make sure that we are able to increase different initiatives, work together to, at the end of the day, be successful and support you all in different ways. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Going back to Timothy, would you believe your roles and responsibilities are as a Board of Trustees member?
Thank you, Riley. In every business meeting I have every day, meeting with, I met with a client today from Argentina, and one of the things, one of the first things we do is we review the candidate, not the candidates, but the, the call members' roles and responsibilities. And that sometimes people, that's called staying in your lane. I stay not in the lane of the chemical engineers I work with, but more in the business development side. So I think roles and responsibilities are very important and very clear. I think to make them clear, again, we need to go back to those fundamentals of communication and understanding whereby, what are the goals and objectives of the initial, the initial project that you're trying to achieve, with those measurements of how you're going to achieve those? So I think roles and responsibilities are very important, and they need to be respected, whether it's the board chairman, board chairwoman, the trustee, the president, and making sure that you're respectful of their role and responsibility, and you stay out of their lane while achieving an overall objective.
The roles and responsibilities of the JJC trustees are really clear, right? I mean, they're, they're explicitly stated. Our role as a trustee, my role as a trustee, will be to establish policy, to oversee the budget and pass a budget, as well as responsible for the hiring and managing of our president. That's it. Those are the roles, right? It's sometimes really easy to kind of forget what is policy creation, what's that development versus what's getting too far in the weeds. You have to trust the staff. You have to trust your educators. You have to trust the people that work here to follow the bumper rails that you establish as a trustee. So to me, if I just put it down into simple terms, my role as a trustee, establish the bumper rails to set this college up for success.
Again, our role as trustees is clear, and it's clearly identified in, in everything that we do, in our book, in anything that we have out in the community, public knowledge. We're a policymaking board, and what we are supposed to do and continue to do is make sure that we look at different things that are happening at the college level and being able to work with administration in order to craft a policy that makes sense, that will be followed along with procedures in order to make sure that we are creating some structure, making sure that we're providing guidance on different issues that are important in order for us to be successful. The other thing that our role as trustees include is being able to support the overall vision of JJC. And that includes supporting the goals and objectives of JJC. We currently have a strategic plan that clearly outlines the goals and objectives. This strategic plan was adopted in, what took place in, we adopted it in 2023, but it was for 2024 to 2027. And that clearly outlines some of the things that we're focusing, including diversity and cultivating and providing support along different, different resources for different students, also making sure that we are supporting different initiatives, our Hispanic serving institution designation. And again, even though each of the trustees might have their own ideas, at the end of the day, is what is truly best for JJC. And again, supporting our administration to make sure that we are following and we are supporting the strategic plan at the end of the day because that's what we want to do in order to make sure that we are providing support to all of our students. Thank you.
Another great question. And we as trustees, and I'm looking back, the roles and our responsibilities, we need to understand the governance structure and the board policies of the board in order for us to move forward as a good trustee. We have to know our school mission, our vision, and our core values. We have to know the protocols for board meetings and how to produce and be in an effective and productive board meeting. We have to know about our finance, know the budget processing so that we know what we're looking at when we are looking at a budget. We have to be involved in academic affairs and student success, the counseling, the advising, career services, so that we know what we're voting on is right for the students because our main focus is our students. Policy and advocacy, that's another thing that we have with state and federal policies and legislation, to advocate for our college needs because that's a big issue so that we get federal funding and state funding so that we don't have to rely on increasing our taxes. Nobody wants to increase the tuition. I'm not a fan of increasing tuition. So we are watching out so that we keep getting the grants that we need in order to, to be sufficient instead of doing anything to increase real estate taxes or tuition costs. Board relationships and team dynamics, we have to have open communication and collaboration and mutual respect with each of our fellow trustees. We have to know legal and ethical considerations, ensure legal and, and requirements, our ethical practices are in place and that we are transparent. We have to develop professional, we have to get involved in professional development and board training because we come in, we're in our own careers. We don't know what a board member is. The only way we learn is by going to classes, and that's why it's necessary for us to learn and go to these ICCTA and national conventions with the American Community College Trustee Association, too. And I think when you look at that and you look at the community engagement and partnerships with our workforce people, that's big. We have a lot to do as a trustee. We may be a policymaking board, but we are very visible, and what we vote on and how we vote is very, very worthy of all watching us because we are the ones that do, do vote, and that's what we're voting on, we're voting what you want, and we hear from you. And our mission is for the students, and it's the community, the students, and that's our biggest concern and our taxpayer. Thank you.
What kind of involvement do you have or hope to have with the JJC community at large? And we'll start with Elaine.
Great. I think a baseline I think a baseline of success of involvement is obviously just showing up at meetings, right? It's a low bar. I think it's time that we expect more from our elected officials. I think it's time we expect more from our trustees. What does that mean and what does that mean to me? It means showing up for students. It means being accessible to students. It means attending events that really support this community. One of the things that I haven't shared, I don't really talk about this too much. I'm a runner, I run a lot. One of my favorite local 5Ks is the JJC Foundation 5K. Hand to God, I'm not saying this just because I'm sitting up here. It is one of my favorite 5Ks. I've run that every year the last three years. Showing up at that, showing up at things like that matter. I am trying to be your elected official as JJC trustee. But I'm still a member of this community. I still support this organization. I will always show up for this organization, be it through the foundation, be it through student advocacy groups, be it towards anything else. I'm accessible. I want to be able to be here for students and be a resource and also show up when it matters most. And that is in the little things, that's in the little events. It's not just a time for a meeting. It's not just newspaper articles and ribbon cuttings. It's the little things that matter as well.
It is my turn, right? I think so. Okay. So JJC typically has many events throughout the year. And just being able to be there, listen to our students, support you all, is going to be crucial. And that's something that I have done in the past at different points in time. But it's something that I can go ahead and continue to commit to be at community events that are important to our students. We also have a lot of clubs that are important and are really active here at JJC. So being able to stop by or support any way with different fundraisers, that's something that I can go ahead and commit to in addition to making sure that we're working on policies that are going to be helpful and beneficial for the student clubs and administration in total. And at the end of the day, it's going to be important. Another thing that I can go ahead and commit to is just being able to listen. I think I'm very accessible, but again, it's something that I can go ahead and continue to be accessible to the students, administration, to be able to listen to some of the things and concerns that you all have. And also, just by being in different community events, we're going to be able to hear what the community member is listening to, what are some things that are, what are some of the things that are going on that are important to them? And then that, at the end of the day, will give us more information to be able to make better decisions as trustees. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I think you heard me when I said I started in 2015 and the big goal at that point was to get the trustees active and get them out in visibility. I truly believe in the visibility position that we should have. I've gone to numerous open houses, when you have open houses here. I've gone to all the chamber events that they have because we should be seen, visibly seen. We have the Grundy and Will County Community Economic Development that gives us good insight as to what's going on in all those communities because Grundy and Will are part of our area, our territory. Also, the mayor's annual updates. They give us the updates of what's going on in their communities. Those are big for us to go to, too. County annual updates, which is going to happen, I think it's coming this week. The county executive is going to give her a big update of what's going on within Will County. That's good, too. I've been to the 5K, I love the 5K. I participated, but last year I didn't. And any of the foundation events because they put on a lot. And it's really good to be a part and to see the visibility that the trustees are there. We're just not at board meetings because, yes, we're supposed to be at those board meetings. But the visibility at outside activities is significant for the people to see that we're just not sitting at a board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Great answers, colleagues, and I agree with all of those. From my perspective, trustees are ambassadors to Joliet Junior College. And that requires engagement to kind of listen and learn and really understand not only what the students think and feel in here, but also the administration and professors. Sometimes those can be different, right? So I think keeping an open mind in terms of our constituents, not only the students, but the administration and also the professors, to ensure that when we're in the community, we're ambassadors. We are reflective of who you are. So we need to do our job by really listening and learning and leaning in to some of those issues and challenges. But I would really boil up in terms of being a good ambassador, moderators. And to be a good ambassador, one needs to really lean in to the business and the thoughts and feelings of not only the students, but the administration and the staff. Thank you.
All right, starting with Nancy. What innovations would you hope to see come to JJC?
I think one of the innovations that we're currently working on, and this is something that we're going to be able to achieve in collaboration with legislation, our legislators and senators, would be just making sure that we're making progress with that baccalaureate degree, making sure that we're providing that opportunity for students to be able to get a bachelor's degree here at JJC in a way that is going to be accessible to them, is going to be affordable compared to a private four-year university. So that is going to be something that I'm looking forward to. And again, we have already started the conversation several months back, but now it's something that has been getting a lot more support. It was one of the items mentioned as part of the budget address by Governor Prisker a few weeks ago. So that's one of the innovations that is going to be really important. Again, that is going to be crucial for the success. The other thing that I'm excited about is any new ideas that come up. So right now, we're working on the baccalaureate degree, but there's a lot of different things that we could continue to be doing to make sure that we're supporting our students as long as we're open to making modifications. And being able to support our students that way is going to be crucial. The other thing that I can go ahead and mention is we have our Mental Health and Wellness Center that is going to be opening very soon and is going to be in order to support our students with mental health and also other services that are important for their success, including connecting them to other resources that are available in the community. And that is going to be something that has taken some time and is something that is crucial for our students to be able to receive those services here in a way that makes sense. Sometimes we have students and community members that might be underinsured or might not have insurance at all. So that could provide some accessibility to some resources that are going to be crucial to provide our students tools to be able to manage different situations that are happening in their lives, in their community, that at the end of the day affect their overall ability to be present in school and be able to manage everything that is happening in the world, in their personal life. So I think I'm really looking forward to the Mental Health Center. Thank you.
Some of the innovations that I'm seeing are the fact that we started with the one through five grade schools to open that up in the summer for them to see what JJC was all about. So it's enlightening them to know what JJC is about, to encourage them to come here. Also with the high school students, too. We have counselors that we are working with, and I think that's great, but we need more. We need to get, they're trying to get into a classroom or a office so the counselor, our people can be in there to, if somebody has a question about JJC, they can come. And dual enrollment. We need more dual enrollment court classes. The president's, we started with a great 12 by 12 by 12 program. I guess it's more enhancements that they're looking for. More kids want dual enrollment classes because they want to become second semester freshmen when they graduate from their high school. I also look for AI. What's AI going to do? What's the effects of AI? Those are things that we have to look at because that is now prominent. And it's even in the business world that we come from, too, besides the educational world. IT, making sure that the IT enhancements are there, that we are doing the accelerations to what the future is so that we're not behind. And then I, too, of course, I'm improving the baccalaureate because I'm excited about the baccalaureate. We need that, and I think that's a great opportunity for our students at a low cost. Because when you look at what the cost of students are coming out with, with student loans, it's amazing what the cost is. I mean, I'm a lender, so I get to see what the students are coming out with. And it's horrible to see student loan debt as high as it is. Community college is the answer for a lot. And we have to get that message out to the parents and to the students, both in the high schools and the grade schools, for them to see what we have to offer because this is a beautiful environment to get a college degree. Thank you.
Thank you. The question relates to innovation. Before we get there, I just want to make sure that my perspective is that we never lose sight of the fundamentals. And that is, you know, science, technology, engineering, math, some of those core competencies that help us get to innovation. So I think the bedrock for innovation is those core competencies, which are the fundamentals. So I just don't want to, you know, jump into the pool of AI, which I think is really important. It's here, it's going to stay, it's going to help us hopefully as long as we manage it properly. But I think we need to focus in on the fundamentals. The second is internships. I think there's no better way to kind of really get a good sense for what you want to do and either fall in love or maybe fall out of love relative to those internships. So building on those current successes of internships based upon a good, solid foundation of the fundamentals. And thirdly, with regards to giving you the pathway towards that fulfillment of the degree with the baccalaureate program. There's not, you know, like Dorothy said, there's no place like home. And Joliet is home for many of our, many of our students, Will County, Grundy, et cetera. So I think if we kept those things in mind, we'll be successful.
The worst part about going last is that everyone says all the answers you're going to say. So I'm going to say similar things and then add, I think when it comes down to innovation, the biggest thing that we can do is an expansion of existing programs and making sure that any expansions, any future things, really suit our students' needs, really suit what our students are asking for. You want to hear where innovation's coming from? It's coming from students. So it's listening. It's hearing what they're saying and making sure you advocate for them because they're the ones that are going to be craving the innovation. We'll just help create the policy and we'll help create the bumper rails to reach that innovation. Everyone's excited about the possibility of four-year degrees out of JJC. Everyone. I haven't met a single person that thinks this is a bad idea. This is a phenomenal idea. Anyone with any sense can support this. It's an exciting opportunity. It's something I support as well. It's innovative. I also want to really highlight that we need to make sure our youth involvement is happening at a young age. If you are a first-generation college student, how are you going to learn about the opportunities? How are you going to learn about JJC if you don't have a touch point, if you don't have engagement at a young age? Starting out in grade school is great. The kids' college program that was launched was great, is a great first touch point. It's a great first impression of JJC on kids, on families. I think when I really think about innovation and helping students and supporting them where they're at, you obviously have to think about mental health, right? That's now important now. It's always been important, but it's been of greater conversation. The barriers our students are facing aren't just mental health, though. It's transportation, it's food security. So we have to be innovative in how we show up, how we support our students, and how we make sure they have the resources to be set up for success.
What ways do you see JJC supporting the growth and development of the district?
I didn't hear you, sorry.
What ways do you see JJC supporting the growth and development of the district?
Of the what?
District.
The district? Well, I think JJC, JJC is the leader as far as the community colleges. It strives to be the first one to show things and do things. I think with the workplace relationships development, the workforce, I think that's key to what we're doing here. And I think that JJC is out there in the public showing, and so is our president out there showing us what our commitments to this district is. And it's through all the districts. He's very widespread. He gets out there, he shows them in the Will County Center of Economic Development, the Grundy County. He's all over our counties. He's talking to the high schools to let the high schools know what we have to offer, the dual credit. We have a lot to offer for these students and it's very reasonable for them to see what the savings is to come to JJC and what JJC can do. It's a very popular, popular topic when you talk and say JJC. We all want to know what JJC is all about. We love JJC. And we love the alumni that keep bringing up JJC. So I think JJC is a very big contributor to this district. Everyone loves to hear about JJC and the growth of JJC and the population. We have, what, over almost 15,000 students right now? And we have so many courses to offer, even for the general education development for the adults. That's key. And I think when they see what we have to offer for that, for people to come back, especially when COVID hit, when they had to change their job situations, JJC was there to offer courses for them to get reacclimated into a different job situation if they needed it. Because we do have certifications that will get people in and their pathways can be then changed for betterment so that they don't suffer without a job. And the other thing, too, is adult-based education classes, too, that we have. That was something that spirits, I think, more adults to come in because when you get to a certain stage, you're like, okay, should I do this? Should I do that? They give us the opportunities for adult-based education. And I think that's good. It's well-rounded for our regular students that come out of high school, our adults, and those that haven't graduated that need us. And I think that's what, that we bring to the district, the knowledge that we have to offer all of us. And we have great accommodations, both here, downtown in Joliet and in Morris. And we have one at Lincoln Way East, if I'm not mistaken, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Excuse me. Growth and development of the district. I think we can kind of look at this in a couple of different ways. But one is allowing the administration and leadership to do their job, encouraging them to do their job. Dr. Klein Amuwa was a great ambassador for, what I would say, university, but it's a college. Nonetheless, allowing that ambassadorship to kind of spread not only within the district, but throughout the state and nationally. Two is that encouraging our staff to pursue national, let's say, programs of recognition, which I know that Dr. Amuwa has achieved. Those are really impactful. That tells me you lead, you don't follow. And I think that's something that we should encourage as trustees to continue to pursue for their growth and development, which really has a positive impact on JJC within our district, well and beyond our day-to-day operations. I think the other piece is that continue to support kind of the internship but relative to the skilled trades, building trades, trades that, let's say, maybe don't get enough visibility during our conversations of science, math, engineering, technology. But I think there's a great need and there's a great union presence here in Will County and our surrounding collar counties relative to trade. So I think we need to continue to encourage those trades, experience in those internships. Thank you.
In terms of growth and development of the district, I think first and foremost, growth. I immediately think about enrollment. How do we make sure that students are enrolling? How do we make sure that they are able to access classes and have the classes that they want to be taking? I think we're seeing a huge increase in enrollment with the dual-credit growth. 12 by 12 by 12 is very successful. Students are taking classes here. Students are being set up for success when they graduate from high school by already earning college credits. It's leaning into that. It's listening to our students, seeing what classes they want to take and making sure that they're offered here. I think in the same standpoint, you talk about development of the district. That means what is happening with our workforce that comes out of JJC? Our workforce that decides to come back to the JJC district if they've left and decided to come back? Are they able to take classes for continuing education? Are they able to ensure that they can hone a skill set that best aligns with their employer? So we need to make sure that our classes truly align with that of the community. And that's what our workforce is needing, what our employers are looking for. And most importantly, what are constituents, which students, what they want to take? I think another thing that's really important to talk about in terms of development and growth, we talked, I mentioned a little bit about big employers, about workforces like that. It's also important to talk about small businesses. We have the Enterprise Business Center that's based out of downtown Joliet that helps students, that helps people be set up to be successful in creation of their small businesses. That's important, too. That's part of this conversation. The world isn't all huge employers and huge workforces. There's small businesses that make meaningful impacts, that are doing great things. And we want to make sure that we are supporting them and making sure that they're set up for success because that's the backbone of our community.
Can I please have you repeat the question one more time? What ways do you see JJC supporting the growth and development of the district?
Perfect. Thank you very much. So the district that we represent, District 525, includes seven counties. That is a big section of Will, Grundy, Kendall, LaSalle, Kankakee, Livingston, and Cook-... big section of Will, Grundy, Kendall, LaSalle, Kankakee, Livingston, and Cook counties. So it's seven counties that each county or each town, city, has their own particular needs and also different organizations and businesses that are part of that particular county. So what I see our role in all of this in terms of growth and development is making sure that we're collaborating with those partners in, across the district, to make sure that we're keeping in mind new industries that are developing new jobs, that are going to be jobs that our students are interested in or are looking at exploring, in order to make sure that we're meeting the demand and the potential need in the community. The other piece of growth and development is we are already taking steps and initiatives in some of the expansion that we're doing, specifically in Grundy County, to make sure that we're providing support specifically in Grundy County to the different needs in that particular community, again, to meet the demand and make sure that we're inviting students and be able to increase that, that recruitment or enrollment of students. And then from there, we're able to work on other things at JJC in order to be able to help them along the way, to engage them and retain them here at JJC. And then at the end of the day, be able to support them towards graduation or transferring to, to a different college or a different university in this case. The other piece of growth and development that we have been already doing at JJC, and we will continue to do, is making sure that we are being part of the community overall and being really accessible to the community. And that is done in a few different things. One of them is making sure that we're making different programs accessible for really young kids. Like the example that we have is the Future Wolves. That is an initiative that focuses on kindergarten to fifth graders. We also have a dual credit, our 12 by 12 by 12 program, in order to engage students in high school, in order to be able to start thinking about what do they want to do in the future? What are some things that they can receive support along the way, even before they make it to college? And then the other part of this is providing support to our non-traditional students in different ways, by providing flexible start times, different options for classes. And also for other students that might not be ready to actually enroll in JJC as a traditional student, but they're interested in getting their GED, being part of the ESO classes. And anything like that, that is going to be crucial. So we're addressing a few different areas in the community to be able to be part of the community. Thank you.
As a general observation, students are paying attention to the challenges the board is facing. How will you be a trustworthy and respectable board member?
Tell the truth. Listen with an empathetic heart and follow up with what you're going to say you're going to do. Thank you.
Trust and respect are earned. I can sit here, I can ask you for your trust, I can ask you for your respect. I hope you can give that to me. And I hope that I would live up to your expectation, that I am trustworthy, and that I am respectable. What I can say to you guys and say to you all is that how we treat people matters. Respect for fellow board members, respect for our constituents, respect for our students is critical. How you treat people, how you interact with people, matters. And that always needs to be front of mind. I can sit here and tell you that I'm trustworthy, that I'm respectable. I believe that about myself. What I promise to you is that I will be those things, that I will show up, that I will be respectful, that I will treat everyone with the respect that they deserve, and treat them with dignity, even in times of disagreement.
I think that it comes down to three different important abilities: being honest, being transparent, and being accountable. Again, our actions, a lot of times speak louder than what we're verbally communicating. So it is something that goes along with what are we actually saying out loud, but what are we displaying? How are we behaving? What are some of the facial features that we are displaying whenever other trustees are sharing something important? All of that affects the overall view that we have for our students. If our students see that whenever another trustee is sharing something, and we have another trustee that is just mocking them, that's not going to be, that's not going to be a good look for, for the board. And it's also not going to be a good look for that particular trustee that is providing specific facial expressions. Again, I fully understand that our students are watching. So when I am at any board meeting, I am mindful of that. Something that is going to be important is we do represent JJC at different community events. We are ambassadors to be able to communicate all the wonderful work that we're doing at JJC. So in order for that to actually show up or come across, we need to behave like respectful, responsible human beings in any situation that we are in, at the board meeting, at other community events. So it matters how we talk to each other when we're part of the board, but also how do we talk to administration? How do we talk to staff? How do we communicate with our students? And also, what are we doing in public events where we are representing JJC, even though we might not think so for some reason, but everything shows up and everything is connected? So again, honesty, transparency, and accountability is something that I can commit to. And I do follow through with what I say. And it's a combination of what are we saying? And what is the follow-through? Or what is the actual change of behavior? Or what are we doing in order to be able to represent you all to the best of our ability? Thank you.
I think being, the question that you asked about that in regards to us as a trustee and how they, how the students look at us, we are there for the students. We are there for the success of all of our students. The word trust and trustee means we need to trust, and we have to trust our board members, we have to trust our students. We have to be accessible, we have to listen, and we have to understand. But we also have to have the visibility so that they can come to us and say if there's something that's bothering them or concerns that they have, to come to us. I think the transparency is huge. When we're sitting up on the board, we are talking about things and going through things and looking at our agenda and making motions and proving things. If a student has a concern, look at those agendas. If there's something that's of concern, talk to us. We're always open. And I think we, as trustees, are wanting to hear from you. Because we have our little notes, this is on our, on our little name tags, we are for the students. We are, the students are watching us. And I thank Ayesha, who brought that and made that part of our thing, because that is our focus, the students. And what's going on here at the school is our focus on the students. And we are trying to do the best we can, offer the best we can, and be as transparent and open as we can for all of the students. And that's what, I think, the students have to respect us and we respect them. It's got to be a mutual respect. Thank you.
Out of JJC's core values, which one do you resonate with the most, and how will it influence your decisions as a board member? The JJC values are respect and inclusion, integrity, collaboration, humor and well-being, innovation, quality, and sustainability. Which one do you most relate to?
I have to say, it was fun to walk in and be told that JJC core values were already sitting at the table as where there's going to be tests later. So glad to hear that this is the question. I think anyone can resonate with any one of these values. As I go ahead and pick just one, I'm going to go to collaboration. Collaboration, to me, has been a key theme throughout my whole life. You can't get anywhere alone. You have to ask for help. You have to ask for support, especially in times when you don't want to, right? Sometimes it's embarrassing. Sometimes it's hard to say, hey, I'm stuck on this. Hey, I need help. I need some collaboration. And I think having the humility to collaborate, having the humility to say, I'm not the smartest person in the room. I might not have the most innovative idea. Sorry, I just jumped to five. But collaboration's important. That's the key of everything we do. If we want to be set up for success, if we want JJC to continue to be successful, to continue to be this great institution that it is, we need to collaborate. We need to work together because we're all pushing towards the same goal. We all want JJC to be number one. So to me, collaboration's the number one thing. It is something that I've used every single day in my career, in my personal life. It's definitely what's gotten me here. So, thank you.
And thank you very much for adding this to our table. That's very helpful. The core value that I will focus on is the number, number one, respect and inclusion. And this can go, can show up in a little bit of different ways. So respect, again, we all want to be respected. But in order to be respected, we actually have to be respectful to others. So this is going to be a combination of, yes, we can ask for respect, but we need to first display that respect to others. The second part is inclusion. This is connected to also DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion. In order to make sure that we are supporting our students along the way in their educational journey, we need to be able to keep in mind what are some of the items or what are some of the tools that our students need in order to be, feel like they're part of something bigger, that they feel comfortable coming to JJC, that they can relate to what's happening. They're involved in different cultural activities or different events on campus in order to connect to the overall idea of why they're here. In order to be able to do that, we need to create an environment that is welcoming, that is respectful, by respecting the identity of all of our students, non-binary, female, male, whatever our students identify with, being able to respect that and be able to create policies that are keeping all the different identities that our students hold, keeping them in a way that we're being respectful towards that. If we do not understand something, being able to ask questions in a respectful manner, but at the end of the day, being able to respect the identity of all of our students and be able to provide resources in order for them to feel comfortable coming to JJC and showing up and participating. And just being here is something that is really beneficial, and we want everyone to, we want to create that environment to support you all. So thank you.
These are all good ones. It's hard to pick. I mean, I like the respect and inclusion. I love the innovation. I love the collaboration, sustainability. I'm in favor of the respect and inclusion. I think we need to be trustees that listen, and we have to listen wholeheartedly with respect as we're listening. And we have to understand, not quick to respond, but listen, slow to listen and understand what our students, our community, and our college needs are. We should support all students, no matter what. And as the DEI is, we have that. It's been, we introduced it. Dr. Mitchell brought one of our VPs in as a DEI. We are very concentrated on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I still believe that we all need to make sure that everyone is treated the same, no matter whether it's your income, your sex, your race, anything that shows any diversity of yourself, we should include all. There should be no, nothing that separates anything of who it is. All students are equal. And I believe that we have to respect that. And in order to respect that, it has to be respected back to us, too, mutual respect. And I think as a, as a trustee, we look for anything that you want to tell us because we are open to listening. And I think you all have to remember that we are accessible to hearing what's going on. Respect us when we say something back to you and understand, to get to know each other. And that's what the primary thing of respect is. We have to respect you, you respect us, and we learn from you. You learn from us. And we're of different age groups, so different things happen with different age groups. They have different thoughts of how we were raised and how you were raised. We have to acclimate ourselves as trustees to what your needs are based on your time in your educational level. And I think that's critical for us to be very inclusive of all that stuff, that we make sure that we have a good, round background for all of your students. Thank you.
When I first sat down, I looked at the JJC core, core values, and I kind of intuitively just kind of forced-ranked a few. And collaboration was number one, integrity, number two, humor and well-being, number three. You know, I think we've gotten away from humor, from being, from enjoying humor and well-being. We've, we've kind of gotten away from that in general. And I think that's something that no matter what, which number one is yours, we need to keep humor and well-being at the top of our mind because life's hard. School's hard. Teaching kids is hard. So I think we just kind of need to take a step back and say, you know what, humor and well-being are part of our job as well. So that's a side note. But collaboration, to what Elaine was saying, we're in this together. And we need to be rolling in the same direction versus hitting maybe one another with a paddle every once in a while. But to do that, we need to really understand what our roles and responsibilities are, have a shared mission, lean in, seek first to understand, then to be understood. And then once that exercise is done, you kind of need to go back to the fundamentals and try it again. But remember, we also need to enjoy this journey that we're on because it goes pretty quick, and that's for all of us. So thank you.
All right. Now we have about 10 minutes remaining for our event today. At this time, we would like to provide you guys with three minutes each for your closing remarks. Nancy, if you would like to begin.
Yes, of course. Few seconds.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you again to student government for hosting this candidates forum and for the invitation to be part of this forum. I enjoyed our conversation. If I'm elected again to be part of the board, I will continue to represent our students and community to the best of my ability by being honest, transparent, and accountable to our students and community. I will continue to strive to be direct and hold my fellow trustees accountable while still being professional. I am committed to continue JJC's legacy of affordability for all students in District 525, as we work to make JJC a free institution for all students. At our last board meeting, we approved not increasing the tuition fee for our students. I'm also committed to increase the access to higher education for minority, first-generation, and immigrant students via the Community College Experience. We have made significant progress with the recognition of JJC now being a Hispanic-serving institution. I am committed to equip JJC with the latest technology, and we're currently working on making sure that we have the technology needed for different areas. At JJC, we will continue to support our students, staff, and administration by acknowledging them as people first and continue to strengthen our infrastructure to support, to provide support and referrals to other resources available in the community. At JJC, we value diversity, equity, and inclusion, DEI, and understand this to be crucial to creating an environment that our students and staff can feel comfortable and thrive in their educational journey. Thank you for taking time out of your Tuesday night to be part of this candidates forum. You're getting informed about the candidates that are running for election and how they align with the overall values of JJC. You can involve, be involved in various ways, including your, letting your family and friends know about the upcoming election, voting if you're able to in this upcoming election, ultimately, holding the people that are part of an elected office accountable to you all. The work of being involved in your government does not stop when someone goes to their polling location. This is just one aspect of the overall process. At any point, you can hold your elected officials accountable at the local, state, or federal level. Election will be on Tuesday, April 1st, 2025. The polls will be open from 6:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. Or if you're in line by 7:00 p.m., you can still vote. To look up your polling location, you can visit your clerk's office for the county, county that you live in and add your address to be able to know your polling location. You can also take advantage of early voting that is available starting on Monday, March 17. For some of the local area, local early voting locations in this general area, we have Will County Clerk's Office, Joliet Township, Fountaindale Public Library, and Naperville Public Library, among many others. So again, thank you for the invitation to be part of this forum. Please share this information that you learned from this forum with your friends and family. I hope to count with your support. Thank you.
[applause]
I would like to also thank the student government for this opportunity for us to be able to talk to you and get to know us better and to meet all of the candidates that are running. Sorry that we're missing two right now, but I think this is a good opportunity for you to see what we're all about. And yes, some of us are experienced and have the experience of being on the board. We bring different elements to the table because we have, and you can see what our voting records are and that we do support the students. We are very, I'm very adamant about keeping and maintaining policies and following our policies and being very transparent. The communication, I believe in, we have to keep going. I believe in the programs that we're offering right now, which is dual credit, and I think that is stellar. And anything that's related to our certifications, our short certifications, and anything related to our work, our work environment for the workplace, the pathways, we need to make sure that we create and keep that going. The success of the students is the main focus here for me. I don't want to see any student fail. I want to see the students be successful and go to their next chapter of life. Just like I said, when I'm in the high schools, I like to see what their needs are because we don't always know all of their needs. And to bring that back, I love being an ambassador in those high schools and bringing that back to our administration to tell them what we need. I think it's critical to have a hands-on knowledge of what's going on, and I think I do have that. With being 10 years on the board, I was elected when I first came on in 2015 as the Secretary of the Board. Six years, I was then the Vice Chair. So I have been in leadership roles and been very concerned about being in those leadership roles and making sure that we are effective in what we're doing as Board of Trustees because we have to be a team. We have to work together because everyone achieves more when we work together and it's more success for our children. And yes, the election is April 1st. Early voting starts on St. Patrick's Day, March 17th. And I would hope that you see that I have been a follow, a good trustee, that I have followed through and done what I've needed to do for the students and for the administration here and believe in what the administration is doing and fulfilling their jobs. And we support our administration. And I appreciate your support. Maureen Broderick, April 1st. Thank you.
Thank you. First, I'd like to wish my fellow candidates the best of success. Elaine, Nancy, Maureen, and Tim and Bob. Bob and Tim are not here this evening, but we're all working very hard and I'm sure they've got a lot of, some stress in their lives with the campaign and obviously your life's to deal with, but it's been good to, to work with you and get to know you a lot better. So thank you. Just a few closing comments. I stand before you today with a vision for Joliet Junior College, one rooted in policy, professionalism, and progress. These aren't just words, it's the foundation of a thriving institution that serves over 10,000 students annually, empowering our community through education and workforce development. Policy that works for students. Our policies should reflect the needs of today's students, whether they're traditional learners, working professionals, or online students. Professionalism that builds trust. With an annual operating budget of $111 million, JJC has maintained 51 years of balanced budgets, a testament to strong financial stewardship. As a trustee, I will uphold this legacy, ensuring every dollar supports students' success, faculty excellence, and modernized facilities. Progress that moves us forward. Progress means investing in programs that lead to real-world careers. JJC graduates thousands of students in high-demand areas of work from business, engineering, technology, healthcare, and the skilled trades. In closing, the future starts now. JJC isn't just a college, it's a launching pad for dreams, your dreams. Whether it's a student earning their first degree, a parent returning to school, or someone building a business, JJC is where transformation happens. With your support, I will champion policies that elevate our students, strengthen our workforce, and ensure JJC remains a leader in education. Let's work together. Let's work together for policy that empowers, professionalism that inspires, and progress that endures. Thank you.
[applause]
Like everyone else up here, I really want to say a big thank you to student government for putting this together, for getting together the questions, asking them to us. It's an honor to be here, it's an honor to answer these questions, it's an honor to appear on the ballot. I really want to share with you all that I do offer extensive experience to help advance JJC's mission, the vision that really aligns with the core values that we kind of discussed a little bit tonight. I have knowledge of the functions of board operations, I have familiarity with the budgeting process and the financial requirements of public institutions. I have direct experience managing large-scale, complex projects as well as developing policy to enact meaningful and direct change to drive positive outcomes. Respectfully, I'm asking for your support and for your vote, Elaine Bottomly, for JJC trustee on April 1st. What I'm really asking you all tonight and asking you all on April 1st is your trust. I'm asking for your support, and most importantly, I'm asking for your belief in me to act as a steward of this amazing institution. Thank you so much for your time tonight. I hope that tonight, by sharing some of my thoughts, some of my beliefs, I've been able to help you have an informed decision on April 1st. Thank you.
[applause]
We sincerely thank each of our panelists for their time and participation in today's events. We truly appreciate your contributions. We hope this discussion provided valuable insight as you consider the future of Joliet Junior College and what matters most to you. On behalf of student government, thank you and we wish you a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
[applause]